The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board's Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, December 4th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to welcome each and every one of you. Your attendance here reflects your interest in public education and is greatly appreciated. So, we're gonna go to item 229.18, the Pledge of Allegiance. We have two students from Marshall Upper Elementary School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, with Gabe and Zahara Kleinie, and Haley, Holly, and Ramona Miller, please come forward. Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Roosevelt McGrath, I'm sorry.
Aye. (Singing) To the flag, on the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, and there is one love, and justice for all.
So, if you listen up here, Ms. Heinz is gonna read your bio for you, okay?
I have Gabe Kleinie. Gabe Kleinie is a second grade student in Ms. Goodison's class. He wants you to know that his middle name and nickname is Stefan Daniel. He's a good leader. It is pretty much easy. I do what the teacher asks me to do. He likes dogs and cats and has two big brothers, Zane Carmen and his sister Zahara Rose. We have Zahara Kleinie, and she's in Ms. Legato's third grade. Zahara is eight years old and has a little brother that goes to Roosevelt McGrath, too. He is seven years old, and his name is Gabe. Her favorite color is purple and her favorite animal is the cat. She has the cat at home. Zahara wanted to be on the student lighthouse team, and this year she is. She really loves her school. Her most favorite part is everything. The most important thing about Zahara is friends include Ms. Morabito and everyone else. I like everybody in the school. Ms. Legato says that Zahara is like Mary Poppins, practically perfect in every way. And we have Haley Miller, is in the second grade, and Haley is a twin. She likes to help her teacher, Ms. Hoover. Haley likes being a leader. Haley is responsible and likes to help people. I am nice to them. We have Holly Miller. Holly's in the second grade with Ms. Hoover. I like being a leader. I try to lead by being proactive and behaving. I like to help people clean their mess. And we have Ramona Miller, third grade, in Ms. Micah's class.
Ms. Mint.
Mint, thank you, Ms. Mint's class. Ramona likes to read. One of her favorite things to read about is butterflies. She likes to do math and science because we get to buddy with partners to work together for a better grade.
Okay, if you all stay right there, Dr. Weaver's gonna come down. He has something for you from the Board of Education for participating in the flag ceremony this evening.
You kids are superstars, and you're the reason that we meet here, to try to do everything we can to make it great for you in school. Y'all like school, right?
Yes.
I wanted to pull that back, just in case somebody said no. All right, Ramona Miller. Ramona, and Holly, and Haley, and Zahara Kleinie.
Thank you.
She's sweet, isn't she? Okay, they're all sweet. Gabriel, this is from the Board of Education to each of you as a thanks for leading us in the board ceremony tonight. You did great. Now, who did you bring with you?
I brought my mom and my little brother.
Who did you bring with you?
My mom and my sister Zahara.
Okay, so, there's a bone of contention as to who brought who here. Okay, where is mom? There she is. And did you bring anybody else with you?
Nah. No.
Okay, is your principal here?
Yes.
What's her name?
Ms. Morabito.
There you are.
All right. Now ladies, who did you bring with you?
Our mom and our brother and our dad.
Where are they? Here they are.
And our brother's right over there.
He's not sitting with your mom and dad. What is that?
Me.
Nothing, okay, good. All right. And your principal as well?
Yes, my principal.
Right. All right, let's give these kids a great round of applause.
So, the children are gonna go out into the hallway and take a picture with Ms. Johnson, and you're free to leave if you like at this time. You don't have to stay. You're more than welcome, too, but I understand. So, moving on to item number 230.18, roll call, Ms. Heinz, and know that Mr. Cox and Mrs. Madison are both excused today.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Heinz, present. Ms. Madell?
I'm here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Let the record show five, two.
Five are present, thank you. Okay, at this time, I also need to amend the agenda to add, amend the agenda to add under presentations, item A1, a presentation by Dr. Randy Leepa, Superintendent of Wayne County RISA regarding the partnership agreement. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Seconded.
Supported by Mrs. Madell. Roll call vote, please, or, sorry, any discussion, roll call vote.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz? Yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. So, know that, again, that's item A1, so it'll be right up under the food service update. So, moving on to item number 3231.18, presentations, Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I will turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent of Administration and Business Services, Mr. Jim Larson Schiler, who will introduce our guests who are presenting today.
All right, thank you, Dr. Holt. Tonight, I'm happy to have Joanne Gross, Paul Tocum, and David Palmer from Aramark with us to present information on our food service program. Aramark provides the district management of our program and district food service staff, which is part of Local 4. They will share financial and operational information. Additionally, they will describe how we have been working with students to get input and feedback on current and new food items, and a few of which they have here as sample.
And, yeah.
Should be on.
Yeah.
Thanks, you turned it off.
Sorry. So, I'm Joanne Gross, I'm the Food Service Director of Wayne Westland School. I think it's starting to use, and we have seen a lot of world changes. Most of you probably think that school lunch is chicken patties, chicken nuggets, and pizza. So, we brought some samples, and I hope you're all gonna try, but to spell some of us myths, we've broadened our taste buds just a bit there. I really like this presentation, but I'm just gonna kind of touch base on the things that I declare a dear to the district. So, this slide shows us that we have served over 2 million meals to kids, the kids in Wayne Westland last year. Universal breakfast, we started in 2010 and 11, and the idea being getting as many kids as we can of nutritious breakfast to give them a terrific start. We've served over a million meals last year for breakfast alone. We also served lunch, a cold supper for a lot of our programs, and summer food, so we cover all the bases with the kids. In moment, this is kind of a tricky graph, but I think basically what I want to let you know is that in 2008, we had almost 30,000 students, and we had a pretty reduced status of about 50%. In 2017, 18, we have just a little over 11,000 students, and we're at about 7% pretty reduced. So, the whole nature of life, we have changed. We have more kids in need than we have on the regular list, and so we're really trying to take care of their needs. This one, this slide just kind of shows a couple of things I want to touch base on is the impact Universal Breakfast has had on our kids. We went, we've significantly more kids in the classroom now, where they are, it's kind of a social thing, while teachers are going through daily instructions. We've also added on supper to the supper program for those programs, for those kids that have their line at the day, so that they can make it through it. Fuel is one of our promotions, one of the many promotions we do with the kids. And Chef Paul goes out to the Millman High Schools once a month and samples some of their things. Today, I think you're sampling is a grilled beef and cheese, a beef and cheese griller, which is beef and cheese on a Texas toast. You're sampling a Florentine pizza with chicken and Spanish and Alfredo sauce. There's a BLT, a chicken BLT stuff, and there's a Southwestern pizza, which is diced chicken, black beans, salsa, and cheese. So, I hope you enjoy them. These are things that the kids try, and they're, they taste it and they prove, so we feel pretty good about the job we're doing here. At the elementary level, we don't have so many opportunities, so once a month, we do a, what's called birthday celebration, and anyone who buys lunch that day, we celebrate everybody's birthday for the month. So, it could be a whole range, Rice Krispie tree, it could be a low-fat, sponsored cup for the kids. We also, in the last couple of years, started doing gardens for birthdays. And what we do is we talk to the principals at the elementaries and the cadavers, about if they wanna participate, and then we supply them with bucket gardens. It could be mixed salad, it could be a taco line, it could be herbs. The idea is to make that connection with kids where their food comes from, and to actually see if growing, if it does. We've done a couple of changes at the high schools. We tried to alleviate some of the crowds in the lines, so we split up the way we service, and we're finding that, because it's been true, two of the more popular to bond with was a tortilla blend, where they can get local nachos, or tacos, or burritos. It's a great vegetarian option for kids, and it's taken off like crazy. We've also operated a 100% smoothie at John Glenn, and when we started, we were serving about 30 a day, and we're serving close to 100 now. Some of the things, the MDE requires of us is to do some professional standards training with our staff. It varies between four to six hours, depending how many they, how many hours they work, and we really, really try to focus in presentation, recipes, safety, customer service, cleaning and sanitation, match cooking, all the things that are important to keep our kids safe. We have what we call a WES, is our customer service kind of logo. It means welcome, engage, smile, and thank you. And we try and get, coach our staff into thinking, even though you may only see those kids for a couple minutes, I can be being sma, being friendly, smiling, and saying, who knows, to say thank you, they are our customers, will go a long way. And that is really know what's going on in these kids' lives, so we can be the friendly face that we can. We started, we done this last year, we started, we've done one round of student focus groups with the kids. We have one set up for Wayne in January, Glendale, and set it up yet, but we just had one, just did some student focus with the lighthouse for bad students. And we tried to sample some of the, it was eight in the morning, so we didn't want to sample a lot of stuff, but we sampled some of the half-breakfast items that they can take, or take up in the cafeteria, and I was ahead. And that is about all I have for you. Any questions?
Any questions? Everything was delicious.
Thank you so much for coming in and sharing with us today.
Thank you.
So, moving on to one, to A1.
So, at this time, we will have Dr. Randy Leepa from Wayne RISA come and share some information regarding the partnership agreement. This was a request from our board workshop this weekend, and also to answer questions from our community around what is a partnership agreement, what does this mean? So, what better to have our county superintendent here? So, thank you so much, Dr. Leepa.
Great to be here. Hello.
Also, he has a handout for us. I'm giving the extras to Ms. Cheryl, so if you would like some handouts, they're over here.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's good to see you all. This is a bit of a homecoming for me. This is where I began my career in education. So, I know many of the board members know this, but many in the audience may not know that I started my career here in education with the Wayne Westland school system, and things have changed significantly in this room, I want to let you know. I used to sit over here when I was in charge of business and operations, and the personnel person sat over here. So, there's been some big changes that have been made since I was here. It was just a couple of years ago. In fact, I remember when I negotiated, there's a guy that's right here, who many of you may not know, but he actually was involved in the administration of the Personnel Department, but before then, he was actually a leader in the teachers' union, and Bill and I negotiated with each other, not against each other, but with each other in many ways. So, I have great, great memories of Wayne Westland, and I have to tell you that I thought this was a great school system when I was here, and I still think it's a great system today. So, you have a lot to be proud of. Certainly, it's been highlighted already tonight, and it's great to be here to talk to you a little bit. I want to take a moment to introduce one of my colleagues, Allyn Moore, who is here. You can wave, Allyn. Allyn is one of our educational improvement consultants, and she's assigned to your school district to support you in the work of student achievement and school improvement. And so, she does a great job with school districts across Wayne County and is very proud to also be here, working with the Wayne Westland organization. And she'll be certainly one of the key people as we talk about this partnership agreement. So, I just want to spend a little time, and I'll follow the handout that I provided you, but just to talk a little bit about what is this partnership agreement? What is this all about? What does it mean? You may have heard about it in the papers, you may have seen stories about this, people are talking about it, what is a partnership agreement? So, a little bit of background on that. Actually, what this comes from is, under the current rules at the state level, the state created a school reform office at the state level to monitor schools that were on the lower end of performance across the state of Michigan. And so, they had a variety of responsibilities, and their actual authority came from a law called 1280C, okay? And maybe a few of my comments will be a little biased tonight. I don't like 1280C, didn't like 1280C, still don't like 1280C, because it really doesn't focus on the real work of school improvement, but it is the law. And there was an office set up at the state of Michigan to do this, and it started to culmate into a variety of different, I will call, challenges for local school districts because they had certain powers within their authority if schools were on the low achieving list for a period of time. And that came really to a head last year. You might remember, actually, about this time last year, that they had assigned a CEO to come in and take over the East Detroit, one of the East, or several of the East Detroit schools. And then after that, what was coming was, were threats from the state through the school reform office, that they would actually start closing schools that were on this list. And appropriately so, there was significant backlash in the communities where these schools were at. And so, what had happened is, believe it or not, some people heard the concerns from these local communities, and the state actually started to back off in regards to some of the, I will call draconian actions that they wanted to take against some of these schools. And so, they backed out of the CEO agreement at East Detroit, they decided that they would not close any schools that were on the priority list for so many years, and what they decided at that point in time that they would do is that they would work with the local school districts and set up these partnership agreements to provide support to these schools, to monitor how these schools were performing. And so, that's really sort of the origin of what partnership schools are. And so, I want to talk a little bit about what this agreement is, just to take the mystery out of this, because really, at the end of the day, what this really has to do with is entities throughout the state supporting local school districts in the work of school improvement. That really is, at the end of the day, what these partnership agreements are about. And so, Michigan, the partners, let me talk just first, who are the partners in this agreement? You know, okay, it's a partnership agreement, who are the partners? And so, there are three required partners in the partnership agreement. One is the local school district, one is the intermediate school district, if the school district chooses to work with them, and the other is the Michigan Department of Education. So, basically, three partners in the partnership agreement. And actually, some school districts decide to add some additional partners in. It might be a local university, it might be a nonprofit organization that wants to support the school district in different ways, they also can be partners. We've actually suggested to school districts to not have them be part of the formal partnership agreement, but just have them be added partners that are going to work with you, to try to simplify the paperwork as much as possible, because again, it really is about the work that occurs. And so, those are the partners in the agreement. And so, one of the things that I would highlight, as it relates to that, I'll go down to actually the point below, what are the key components? But one of the things I want to highlight as it relates to this, these partnership agreements is that the local school district loses no control over the schools that are in a partnership group. And that was one of the key things that was negotiated when the state worked on this with the Michigan Department of Education initially, and with intermediate school districts, who very, you know, worked closely with school districts in their county already. And so, the bottom line is, the local school board is still in charge of that school, even if they're part of the partnership. The agreement is basically just an agreement among these three parties to say how they're gonna work together to monitor student achievement and monitor things, the goals that they've set over the next several years to provide some additional assurance that there's work going on that should be going on at the school. But it in no way takes away the rights of the local school board, or the fact that it's the local school system that is in charge of that school and all of its decisions at the end of the day. This is really, really important, because remember what the state started with? They wanted to sign CEOs, they wanted to say, they could close schools, they wanted to take control. And we know, we know the research, we know based on what's happened in Michigan, state takeover's no more. It's the local community that needs to do this work, and that's recognized in this partnership agreement. So, that's really important to know. What are the components of the partnership agreement? First of all, it identifies who the partners are. I mentioned the three that have to be part of the partnership agreement. It identifies the partner's responsibilities, and I'll talk a little bit more about that more in a second. Possible length of agreement, by and large, the three years. And then, what the partnership agreement has to have are 18-month benchmarks for the school that's involved. And when we look at that, it's important on how you want to set up your partnership agreement. We recommend that you really look not at 18-month benchmarks as it relates to student achievement, i.e., we're gonna do X, Y, or Z as it relates to the improvement in your NWEA scores, or your M-step scores. That is really premature. The first 18 months really ought to be, what work do we want to do? What work do we want to outline that we're gonna do over that period of time to show that we're moving forward? And I have to tell you, you know, this is, we have two school systems that are in partnership agreements that we started last year. We were pretty anxious the first time we went through this, about how receptive the state was going to be in working with us, and I'm very happy to report that they were very receptive when we started talking about this. These agreements ought to focus on the real work. What are we really trying to do at these schools to make sure that the right things are happening, as opposed to saying, well, we're gonna see a 4% growth in X, Y, or Z over a short period of time? And so, that first 18 months really can be more along the lines of actions that the school and the school and the school district are gonna take over that period of time, and I'll give you a few examples in a few minutes. So, that's a part of the partnership agreement. You also have, and there are some certain, there are certain academic goals that they ask that you achieve by 36 months, which is three years, and so, they provide some time in there. And I have to tell you, one of the great things, again, about this agreement is that as you move ahead, because you will find that what you thought today made sense doesn't make sense six months down the road when you're into this work. They're very, they're very open to saying, you know, we need to do, instead of doing X, we need to do Y, and they'll work with you, they'll work with us to make sure that you can do that, because again, it ought to be focused on the real work. So, but at the end of the 36 months, they will ask you to have an academic target set both from a growth standpoint and a proficiency standpoint. It can be based on whatever assessment you want to use. But I would highlight, just as an example of how flexible this can be, when we started talking to them about this with our largest school system here in Wayne County, we said, you know what, you're asking them to set academic targets right now, when we haven't even done the research in regards to what does growth look like for schools that look like this? They're saying, well, you know, pick 3%, pick 1%. Well, why? Why would you pick that? And so, they allowed us, they want to have approval or an agreement eventually on what those targets are, but they allowed us to go back, and we did research on similar schools that were similar to those partnership schools in that school district. And we identified through research that appropriate growth would be about 1.6% based on what we saw, good schools doing that had the same demographics of that school system. And so, we were making research-based decisions as opposed to just jumping in and throwing something in the partnership agreement. So, I want to highlight that that's important as you think about, as you create this, but something has to be set along those lines. And then lastly, what happens if schools do not meet either their interim goals under the benchmarks or the end-of-year goals at the three years? And again, I think MDE, what they want to see is progress toward, that's what they're gonna be really focused on, is that there's progress towards their goals, and I think that, I think they're gonna be very flexible in that regard, because guess what? They don't want to take the school over. They know that that's not a good system. They know that the research says that will not work. And so, there may be other reasons if we're not meeting the targets, there may be other reasons why that's happening, and they're actually recognizing that and acknowledging that. So, I'll mind the responsibilities of the different organizations. Again, I want to highlight again, the agreement is basically, who are the partners? What are the partners' responsibilities? What are the 18-month benchmarks? What are the 36-month goals academically? And then, what are the consequences if those goals aren't met? That's basic, the basic outline of what the agreement is. Again, responsibilities, let me highlight what goes on in the local school district. Again, this is something that can be molded by the local school system along with MDE and us. I'll give you an example of things that we put in the initial agreements. So, for example, things like developing profiles for each of the partnership schools, we only have one, but that would be something that would be a local district responsibility. Identifying district-wide expectations for systems, and so, before you go into a classroom and say, what's expected in that classroom, what should we be seeing? One of the questions is, well, what are the district-wide expectations? Do you have a curriculum that's expected to be taught in the school? Do you have an assessment program? And is that outlined in regards to when assessments are given at the school? And so, that would be something that the school district will identify right up front. Yeah, here are our expectations for curriculum, here are our expectations for assessment programs, those types of things. Those are outlined, or should be outlined by the school district, and then the school district will set initial goals and strategies for improvement. And so, as I said, that typically highlights, you know, different things that will occur before you see the improvement. One of the things that we've put into several of the agreements is that we'll conduct a deep review and discussion of each of the partnership schools. We only have one, but that was really important. It's about the work. It is about us sitting down collectively and listening to your staff, listening to your experts in your school district, and you've got good people here and smart people to say, what's going on in your school? to say, what's going on in your school? What's happening? Tell us what you're thinking. You know, from a Wayne Reeser perspective, we're there to say, you know, have you thought about this? Do you need some support over here? But it really is sitting down and talking about actually what's going on in that school in the classroom, doing a review of what's happening and having good conversation. This probably just sounds way too logical. Right? Sounds way too logical. I mean, this is really the kind of work that should be happening and really, really very honestly in all of our schools. And I think what you find in other partnership school districts and which you'll find here is, this isn't an issue just for the one school. It's identified for all of your schools. And again, you know, you have the responsibility of refining the initial goals, as I said. As time goes, you'll find out that for a variety of reasons, you want to go in different directions as you learn things. And so you revise the initial goals. Of course, you have to then monitor the goals over time and identify potentially other partners that may be involved. And so I want to just highlight again, and I bolded this for your, in your summary. But again, this work, much of this work can be completed after the agreement is signed. We don't have to have, you don't have to have every detail worked out about what are we going to do in the next 18 months and what are our goals to be over the next three years? Some of that stuff, appropriately, you need to have more conversation about. And so you can actually build that into the agreement. And I, we actually, when we would talk to local school districts in the state, we would say, you know what, we don't need 18-month benchmarks. We'll give you two-month benchmarks and then four-month benchmarks and six-month benchmarks, so things that we're going to do along the way so you know that we're doing this work. But it's not about saying, we're going to reduce absenteeism by 12% over the next three months. That doesn't make any sense. We need to sit down and talk about really what types of things ought to be focused on and then putting those things in the agreement as we move ahead. And so I want to just provide that level of assurance that you have that flexibility with these partnership agreements. You don't have 90 days, which is really the timeline to get this written agreement done. You don't have 90 days to solve all and address every single issue that needs to be addressed for any particular school over time. And so you have time to think through that and that's what the way that these things ought to be structured. What's the responsibility of Wayne Reeser? It can include things such as supporting the collection of data if it's needed, identifying curriculum options if that's needed, providing training if that's needed, facilitate and provide these conversations. That's a lot of what we do is we work with local schools to talk, you know, about what are you going on? What are you seeing? Hey, do you want our feedback on this? Does this make sense? Those deep conversations are one of the most important things that the people like Alin do when they're out working with local school districts. And then of course, we help monitor progress and identify any resources that might be available to help you out. Those are basically our responsibilities. MBE's responsibilities are help to identify resources, financial or other. Identify reporting requirements that can be waived. This is a positive and eye-to-eye to both the partnership agreement is that actually we can put in there that, you know what, why are we filling out this school improvement report and the 17-page report when we're already doing it over here for our Title I requirements and right? And then I'm talking about things that you guys understand. But we can actually go to the state and say, look, we want to delve into the real work here. Can we get some of these other requirements waived, you know, working overtime? And so that's one of the things that MBE does to support. Of course, they periodically review the progress and the support, and support the school districts in any ways, other ways that they can identify through their resources. Does this agreement only impact the identified schools or does it impact the entire district? So any consequences for not beating the goals are only applicable to the identified school or schools. Of course, this work sometimes can impact districts because sometimes you're working on systems, things that support that school but support your other schools also. But any consequences are only identified for that particular school. How long is the agreement for? It's for three years. That's basically the timeline. And you have 90 days to come up with a written agreement on this. And then what happens if the school does not meet their goals? And so the state outlines certain things that are possibilities that that occurs. And I put down, they do not substantially meet the goals because I think MBE wants to work with local school districts and just making sure that the schools are on the right trajectory moving forward. And so, but the types of things that can happen is they can increase the involvement of Reeser in regards to the operation of the school. They could adopt a different new reform model for the school or they could consolidate or reconfigure or redesign the school. So those are options that are available if for some reason we were not moving forward in the right direction with the partnership agreement, which I hold hardly believe will definitely not be the case here in Wayne Westland. So, but that is part of the agreement. It has to be outlined per law, the A.D.C., the law. And so that's, you know, that is basically it. And I would just share with you that, you know, one of the things that we've worked with these partnership agreements is, let's get the written stuff done about what has to be done in writing and let's get to the real work. Because that's where, that's where best school improvement should occur. So with that, if you have any quick questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm sure you have a variety of things that you're attending tonight, but it's a pleasure to be here to talk a little bit about what this big mystery of the partners and schools can be.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Ms. Medel?
I almost hate to ask this question. Is this another unfunded mandate?
Is it another unfunded mandate? I believe that there will be funds that will be made available to help support partnership schools. So yet there are additional things that occur because of the, that come from the goals. One of the responsibilities actually of MBE is to help define the resources, actually help to loosen up the rules for Title I or for regional assistance grant funding that funding's available for, to help provide support for that. Having said that, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, there's no, there's no promises you won't see that in writing, that it is guaranteed that if there are action costs, they will follow, they will be.
Okay.
Good question.
Mr. Buckle.
Thank you. A lot of what you said has helped to clarify some of the mystery of all of this. It's kind of reassuring to know that you're going to be there to give us some pointers along the way and that you're doing that from the perspective of having gone through this process with other districts already. So I thank you very much and look forward to working with you.
Yeah, we're really looking forward to working with the school district and by the way we have done through the regional assistance grant for several years. Alin's been here as a professional improvement consultant for several years. And so we feel that we know you pretty well. We feel that we're involved in your schools pretty adequately. And that's why we really pushed hard to have us, not MBE, alone be the partner. Not that you guys, not that they're nice, nice people out there, but you know, the closer you get to home, the real work happens here, by the way. You know, we're going to be here to support you. You guys are well capable of doing the real work here. I have 100% confidence in that.
You want else?
I just wanted to get an announcement. We do have two meetings coming up. I'm going to say it in my comments, but I figured it would be a good time. Tomorrow, Tuesday, from 2:00 to 5:00, here in Conference Room A, we have a meeting set up where we, anyone who is interested in more information, particularly the information that Dr. Lea just shared, can come here to Conference Room A. It is not one where you have to be there at 2:00 and it ends at 5:00. Anyone is welcome to come at any point during that time. And then we have a second session set up for Thursday. They are not the same. The first day will be about information getting so that everyone can understand what this is and ask any questions. I will be there and it will be facilitated by Ms. Jenna Mullins, Mrs. Jenna Mullins, who is our Executive Director of School Improvement with the assistance of Dr. Moore, who won't be there, but she is definitely having input. On Thursday, Dr. Moore and Mrs. Mullins will be conducting a session to gather input from any and everyone who would like to just offer more, get more information and offer their thoughts and insight. So those are the first two sessions that are set up. From there, more sessions will be announced and they'll be on the website and we're working on getting those out. But I wanted to make sure folks knew.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out.
Good to see you, everybody.
Good to see you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, you can move on to part B of the presentation.
So at this point, I am going to turn it over to Mr. John Albrecht, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. And this is our celebration of our student achievement data. It is one of my core beliefs that we must celebrate the great things that happened at our school sites. And amidst discussions of partnership agreement, it can be sometimes difficult to see the positive. Mr. Albrecht and his team have done an amazing job of finding those positives. So, Mr. Albrecht.
Well, thank you, Dr. Hall. Members of Board of Education, Cabinet has reviewed those results and shared them with the Board of Education. And so I've been asked to facilitate recognizing the following schools and their staff for outstanding achievement tonight. So as we display your school and staff principals, please stand with your staff if they're in attendance and be recognized. You'll note there's a significant number of names on each of these slides. We are not going to read them, but each of those teachers will be recognized and receive a certificate. So Edison Elementary School for exceeding the county average in English language arts and/or math, improvement in significant subgroups, and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores on the 2016-17M Step Test. Elliott Elementary School for improvement in significant subgroups on the 2016-17M Step. PD Graham Elementary School for exceeding the county average in English language arts and/or math, improvement in significant subgroups, and an increase in longitudinal language arts and math longitudinal scores on the 1617M Step. Please stand and be recognized. Hamilton Elementary School for improvement in significant subgroups and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores for 1617M Step. Hicks Elementary School for improvement in significant subgroups and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores on the 1617M Step.
One Hicks.
Got it.
Hoover Elementary School for exceeding the county average in English language arts and/or math, improvement in significant subgroups, and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores in 2016-17. Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School for improvement in significant subgroups for 1617M Step. Schweitzer Elementary School for improvement in significant subgroups and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores for 1617M Step. Taff Galloway Elementary School for an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores on the 1617M Step. Walker Winter Elementary School for exceeding the county average in English language arts and/or math, improvement in significant subgroups, and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores in the 1617M Step. Wildwood Elementary School for exceeding the county average in English language arts and/or math, improvement in significant subgroups, and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores for 1617M Step. That's where the list gets long. Marshall Upper Elementary School for an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores on the 1617M Step Test. Franklin Middle School for improvement in significant subgroups and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores on 1617M Step. Stevenson Middle School for improvement in significant subgroups and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores on the 2016-17M Step. Tincombe's Educational Center for an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores on the 1617M E Test. Wayne Memorial High School for improvement in significant subgroups and an increase in longitudinal language arts and/or math longitudinal scores on the 1617M E Test. And there's two slides for this group. And that would be the end of that presentation, so congratulations to all the schools.
Thank you. That's good.
I have a seat. Final recognition of the night. We have two schools, we mentioned them last week, that are coming out, that came out of priority status. And the work that it takes to come out of priority status is beyond, it's unfathomable for many of us because it involves many long hours. It involves thinking outside of the box. And I wanted to acknowledge the staff of both Hamilton and Hicks Elementary, I almost said, Hamilton and Hicks Elementary. So will you please stand, Hamilton and Hicks? You are here. Thank you so much for your hard work. I know that there were a lot of hours that went into it. It was a lot of difficult, deep, soul-searching work, a lot of Saturdays that were involved in this. So thank you to the staff, the students, the parents, the families of Hicks and Hamilton Elementarys. You are recognized and we are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our presentations for tonight. So if you want to, I'll give you a chance to ease out, because I know you all have.
Sample the food on the way out.
So those who want to leave can leave. Those who want to stay are more than welcome to stay, but I'll give you an opportunity to skedaddle.
I haven't seen a, I haven't seen a mass exodus like this. Moses has brought the children.
Apparently, they didn't come to see us.
No, they didn't. So if...
I didn't take a break.
I didn't go in the bathroom.
So moving on to item number 232.18, citizen comments, agenda items only. Anyone in the audience? Okay. Moving on to item number 233.18, consent agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Buckle. Any discussion?
I have a comment. Of course, I have food in my mouth. Start of my life. I really want to thank Jenny Atwood for her generous donation to our schools for the buddy benches. They have turned out to be a real godsend in our buildings. And this is somebody I've known a lot of years. She herself has a lot of kids that grew up in Wayne Westland School District and have gone on to bigger and better things. So again, I want to thank Jenny for her donation.
All right. At this time, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Buckle?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 234.18, review and approval business services and finance items. Mr. Larson Seiler.
All right, thank you. On page 13 in your board agenda is information on purchase of 542 Dell LED2 Chromebooks, 684 Dell LED2 touchscreen Chromebooks, 34 mobile computing cards, and 1,226 Chrome Management licenses from Title I funds not to exceed $397,000. These computers will be deployed at Graham Elementary, Wildwood Elementary, Hamilton Elementary, Hicks, Hoover, Adams Upper Elementary, Marshall Upper Elementary, Stevenson Middle School, Franklin Middle School. Additional information on these buildings enrollment and computer inventory by building is located on pages 15 to 18 of your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Larson Seiler. At this time, I'll take a motion. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Medel.
Support.
Supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion, Ms. Heinz?
Okay, thank you. I just have...
Okay, thank you, I just have one quick question. What is the lifespan of those computers, how long do they usually last, on average?
Five years.
Five years, oh, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
The record show five-two.
Thank you, motion carries.
Excuse me, Madam President, I keep hearing five-two, it would be five-zero.
I'm sorry, five-zero, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, you're right. No, no. I didn't catch that, so I appreciate that, thank you. Item number 235.18, Board Officers' Transition Process. So at this time, everyone, you know, as stated in our board operating procedures and by our policy, that in January, we will be changing hands as far as our officers. And so what we want to do at this meeting is just kind of get a feel for who wants to hold what office come January. So, Mrs. Heinz is going to go through each name, and you can just tell it what your interests are.
Dr. Weaver?
I will serve in any position my fellow board members feel that I'm worthy for. Thank you.
Ms. Medel?
Same thing, I will serve in any capacity that this dean, this board deems that I am capable of handling, except President.
Ms. Walker?
I feel the same way, so whichever, wherever you guys want me, that's what I'll do, I'm comfortable in any position.
Ms. Heinz, any position that I like being, the secretary. And Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, and I'm available for any position. I would very much like to remain as Treasurer.
And for the record, Mr. Cuts said that he felt the same way, that he wasn't, it wasn't any, he didn't need to be in any particular position, and that he would go whatever the board wanted. And I didn't hear anything from Mrs. Madison.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number 236.18, Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Medel?
Each of you has received the monthly financial statements from the Head Start Program for the last couple of months because we got a little behind with the auditing process in the business department. So we've now caught up, and they are fully enrolled as of last Friday. Moving right ahead with our little ones.
Great. Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion to accept Mrs. Medel's report for the Head Start.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, supported by Ms. Heinz. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
The record show five-zero.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item number 237.18A, because it seems like this was left off, but we need the superintendent's report, so I guess we're going to need to adjust this, because it was, we don't have the superintendent's report on here.
Yeah, you've got to look off the agenda.
So, at this time, I'll take a motion to adjust the agenda to add an item number 237.18 point, or 236.18A.
So moved.
Moved by Mr., or by Dr. Weaver?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
The record show five-zero.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll do item number 236.18A, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I would like to acknowledge the teachers, support staff, cast, and families that devoted time to put on such amazing productions at John Glenn and Wayne Memorial High School. I was able to go and see both productions. I literally cannot wait to see what our kids come up with for spring. They were phenomenal, we, my husband and I enjoyed them immensely, and we're very excited. So I wanted to thank everyone involved, because that takes a lot of hard work and dedication to put on productions, and both of them were very, very well done. I also want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and congratulate our seniors who finished up fall sports, and to the many who have signed and are considering college offers around academics and athletics. I also want to acknowledge Tincom Educational Center, who was able to graduate 20 students, 21 students, 21! As Cam was like, 21 students at the quarter, and they also have a list of students that they're going to, that they're pushing to move at the semester. So, thank you for all of that hard work, and really acknowledging our kids that need a different environment to learn, and they're making it through. So thank you for that. I also want to acknowledge our families and our students from the academic letter ceremonies. It was great work from all involved at both Wayne High and John Glenn, and I look forward to continuing this amazing tradition with our Board of Education and the academic letter ceremonies. I wanted to speak to particularly the partnership agreement. As I stated earlier, the partnership agreement is something we've been invited to participate in with the State of Michigan and Wayne RISA. This is a, an opportunity for us to address the needs of not only one school, but to ensure we are providing necessary services to all of our schools. There will be two sessions scheduled for this week to anyone interested in coming to learn and participate in idea sharing, and to begin the process of getting a draft prepared. These will be on Tuesday, December 5th, and Thursday, December 7th, from 2:00 to 5:00 here at the Board Office in Conference Room A. There isn't a need to stay the entire time if you have other plans, and you may definitely come on Thursday even if you were not able to make, make it on Tuesday. These will be facilitated by Mrs. Jenna Mullins, our School Improvement Executive Director, and Dr. Ellen Moore from Wayne RISA. We have a meeting with our State Superintendent Brian Wiston and his team, along with Wayne RISA, this Friday, December 8th, and we will have more to report once that meeting occurs and we're able to know a little bit more about the expectations that we have. I also want to give an update on our choice work. Mr. John Silvery will be returning to our district on Monday, December 11th, to do a run-through with the Cabinet Team and a few guests in preparation for our work with Leadership Council on December 13th. He has completed, I believe it was over 25 sessions, something around that, 25 sessions. He went to every single one of our schools and had meetings with the staff, we had several community forums, and we had an online means to participate in the choice work. Now that we have all of that information, it's about condensing it together. Our goal on the 13th at Leadership Council will be to come away with two to three grade level configurations, that then will go to our Maintenance and Operations Team to price out and return back to our Board Finance Committee on January 10th, and to the School Board on January 22nd. Any questions regarding the choice work process, please see Mr. Jim Larson Schider, and he can definitely clarify any challenges or anything that comes up with that. We had, there was a workshop this weekend with our Board of Education to discuss prioritizing goals and expectations district-wide, and how we as a, as a Board of Education and myself as superintendent can operate in the best interest of the school district. This opportunity allowed us as a team to understand our roles and the areas of strength and growth as a Board Superintendent Team. A great outcome was the understanding that on the part of all of us, that our strategic plan, our instructional plan, and our district improvement plan are three living documents that must be aligned and prioritized moving forward as we go into this new world of a partnership agreement and aligning all of our resources to that work. We also left with a better understanding of the impact that having numerous FOCI and programs here in our schools and district has on our ability to support and do the work. More information will be posted online as it becomes available. Also from that work, we, we will be working with Wayne RISA to work with Holdings and Associates to get a solid and objective feedback from the community and district around our programs, services, and needs of the district. This idea was something that came out of our board meetings this weekend, found out today that they are available to do that work. We are working on a schedule for the month of December with a report out to myself and the Board of Education by January. Please be on the lookout for dates that, that we can ensure every voice is heard as we move forward. I want to reiterate that, oh, I want to thank first of all, Mr. Leepa, or Dr. Leepa for coming today, Joanne Gross and her team, and Mr. Larson Schider for the amazing presentation today, and the food samples, please, please sample the food, because we want to make sure that it's all eaten. The teachers and administrators and social workers and support staff who came today to be acknowledged and recognized, while this is the, it's very important for us to recognize the great work that is happening. We know that we have improvements to make, but we have amazing celebrations that we need to continue to, to celebrate with our team. And I also want to thank Jenny Johnson and her team for helping us put together that celebration. The work behind the scenes may seem very simple to create a PowerPoint and, and do something like that, but it takes a lot of hard work to go through and make sure it happens. And I also want to acknowledge Cheryl Watson and Mrs. Sue Rossin for all of their hard work and commitment to making these kind of celebrations and these meetings occur. Finally, I want to reiterate my purpose. I realize that there, as we're looking at rightsizing our district, there may be some challenges that folks are experiencing. I understand that, and we are working very hard to make sure that we minimize the impact on multiple levels. And where's my, I put it wrong, oh, here it is. So, the change is currently happening, impacts central office administration and not the building-level personnel or support staff. I'll say that again. The shifts that are happening here at central office impact central office administration, not building-level supervisors, administrators, or support staff. There aren't any plans whatsoever to adjust building-level personnel unless there is a vacancy created. There will be several opportunities upcoming, and positions are still being considered. So what I ask as we move forward is that we continue to do business as usual in the best interest of one another, as well as our students, until more information becomes available. My purpose here is to serve the students, families, and communities of Wayne Westland, to improve the results for students, and ensure a positive and productive work environment for all employees. I appreciate you have a, and as we move to this, this season of holidays, I ask that we, whether you celebrate Christmas, whether it's Kwanzaa, whether it's Hanukkah, or any other holiday at this time, this is a time for family, for friends, for togetherness and rejuvenation. Please enjoy your holiday season, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. At this time, we'll move on to item number 237.18, Citizen Comments, non-agenda items. Okay, I see you.
Couple things. I was watching the past couple of months videos, and I would like to know that certain individuals on the board do not come across on the microphone. So it's very hard to hear certain people. Madam President, you're one of them, I'm sorry.
I'm aware of that.
Sorry. Just, Peter, I know I'm in the meetings, I'm sitting here, but certain things will issue. Also, the Chromebooks that were approved today, are those in addition to what was mentioned at the last meeting? Or is this tonight just a breakdown of what we've seen and where they are going? Thirdly, and lastly, took a gander online to the hiring, and I see that there are four slots available for the Assistant Superintendent. So are we going to have seven, or are those going to include the three that we already currently have? Or what is the number for that?
Thank you, Ms. Samples. Anyone else? When you get to the mic, please state your name and your address, please.
I'm Brandon Everly, 728 North 5 Building, Westland. This is my fiancee, Graham Watts. We have our son that goes to Walker Winter in the TAN program. At the end of the school day today, we got a message.
Hold on, I'm going to pause this one second, and just let you know, to be mindful that, you know that this is taped, and that it goes out to everyone. So, be careful in names, I don't want, you know, to, verbal laws and things like that, you don't want to disclose anything. Okay.
Our story King shared that.
Okay, all right, just wanted to give you the heads up.
But thank you for that, appreciate that.
Okay, all right.
We were notified that the TAN program is for K through, K through one, is being adjusted to one classroom. As I know of right now, my son's class has 14 kids, and the other class has 13. So, this is a little concerning, due to PIM switching classes, meaning that you'll have a new adjustment period for a new teacher, along with the routines that were already set in place. We also did not have prior knowledge of this. A message or any sort of information towards this was not sent out to other parents. We were discussing this with other parents in the class, or my son, they were not notified or did not know about this.
Any consensus between all of us parents that I've spoken to, or have not spoken to, every parent of every child in the classroom, but the consensus of parents that I've talked to so far have been rather negative in nature. We all feel that this is not a change that needs to happen at this point in time. We feel that this could have been addressed at the beginning of the year when enrollment statuses had been solidified and addressed at first. We feel that this consolidation is unnecessary, particularly at this point in time, because it is the middle of the school year, and because the kids have already become accustomed to their routine with their specific teacher, they've become familiar with their classrooms, they've become familiar with the kids that are in their class, and I feel that this adjustment would be a negative thing to them because of the length of time that it would take them, I feel it would take away from their education.
Is that it? Okay, thank you for coming. What we'll do is we'll have someone from the Superintendent's Office, we have took down your concerns, and someone will contact you regarding your questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to item number 238.18, Review or Recommendations, Board of Education. Let's start with you, Mr. Buckaloo.
Okay. I was reminded a couple of days ago that when board members go to conferences, that they probably should take a moment and report back to everyone just what they did at those conferences. So, last month, I and three other board members attended a conference at Lansing. We were joined there by Superintendent Holt, and these are some of the things that, that came about during that conference. First of all, it was an excellent opportunity to talk to other board trustees from around the state, to hear what was going on in their districts, and it, it was just kind of a reassuring process to do that. The gist of this conference is, it's a series of breakout sessions, and some of them didn't interest me, I didn't go to them, others I found very appropriate, and I attended those, and I know that my colleagues did the same thing. So here are some of the, the breakout sessions that I attended to. The first one was a session on sexual abuse in schools. The second was a session regarding the Governor's 21st Century Education Report. There was a very interesting presentation on municipal bonds that I was able to attend, and another on managing controversy regarding controversial board decisions. Perhaps the most timely presentation dealt with the role of the board in support of the Superintendent entering into a state partnership program. We also, last week, Thursday, and, and again on Saturday, attended a, a board workshop here in the district. Superintendent Holt talked about that. I won't go through the whole process, except to say that we met for a little bit over four hours on each day. The first session was facilitated by MASB, the second by Wayne County RISA. The first session was facilitated by MASP, the second by Wayne County RISA. And a number of things came out of that for me personally. One was an opportunity to kind of take a second look at some of the things that we have done in the past. I reread the Board Operating Procedures. And I also reread our strategic plan since those meetings took place. Excuse me just a second. There are some events coming up this week. This Thursday, John Glenn is going to induct new members to their chapter of the National Honor Society. And I think that that's usually a neat thing, I know several of us will be attending that. Friday is the combined Wayne Memorial-John Glenn Junior ROTC Military Ball. And this has become, over the years, probably the highlight for our ROTC cadets, J-R-O-T-C. I know I enjoy it very much. Thursday is December 7th, that's Pearl Harbor Day. And you may all recall that President Roosevelt said the December 7th, a date that will live in infamy. I learned this afternoon that Mrs. Anderson at John Glenn is putting together a panel discussion for her students on Thursday. And she let me know who was going to be on that panel. It consists of World War II veterans, including a former Tuskegee Airman, a submariner who served on the US submarine Hammerhead, a former officer from a combat engineering company, and an NCO who served as an air supplyman. I've also been told that if transportation can be arranged, one or perhaps two women who served on the home front, who were Rosies the Riveter, are going to make their appearance and lend their experiences to the panel discussion. So it looks like it's going to be a great thing. For those of you who don't know, Mrs. Anderson has a real passion for bringing together our veterans from that Greatest Generation with her students in the current timeframe. And she has done that for some time, has received numerous awards, local, state, and national, in doing that. This looks like another opportunity. There may be some media attention attached to this, that's still up in the air at this point. But even if there is no media attention, it's going to be a great experience for the kids who are able to participate in that. And finally, this is about three months, Dr. Holt, for you on the Board. I am totally amazed at the mastery that you're demonstrating on all of the things that's going on in this district. I think many people would still be trying to find out where the clause it is. So I couldn't be more pleased with your accomplishments to date, and I look forward to working with you as the year goes on.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo.
Thank you.
And that event is at noon on December 7th, just in FYI for the community. The event you're talking about is at noon on December 7th at John Glenn.
On room 1, in room 136.
In room 136, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate all the schools and the teachers for their fabulous Board. I'm also glad to see the schools come out of priority. I'm excited about the new partnership agreement. It's gonna be a really good year. I was able to go, as Dr. Holt said, I was to go to both the plays at Glenn and Wayne, they were really good. The academic awards, and I think those are so important because like as a Board member, like my greatest expectation and hope is when I see the kids graduate. That makes me feel really good, like we've prepared them for society and to shake their head and give them a diploma. And when you see those academic letters, you see the start of the future of the Victoria, you see the start of the future. So I'm really proud about those programs. And they are, they do have some, you know, events this week I'm gonna participate in as well. Dr. Holt, you are doing an awesome job. And with the retreat that we had, it was amazing. It was able, like he said, to go back and look at the strategic plan, look at the Board Operating Procedures, and then come up with different ideas and innovative thoughts as a group and co- collaborate. Collaborate on ways to improve. And as the parents tonight, thank you so much for letting us know what's going on because I really do care about what the concerns of the community are. So we get back as a Board, we discuss and work out plans to, you know, work it to the best of the ability to help the students of the district. Because one thing I've noticed about this Board here is we all love and care about our children, that's why we're here. It's a lot of work, like 19 schools, oh my goodness. It's a lot, a lot of children, so we put a lot of time and dedication. So we are there for your children and to support the staff and administration and central office, and everyone's involved. So like, thank you guys again for all your hard work. And like I said with the conference, we did the one with the colors, where we learned our true colors, like gold and, like our different personalities. And that helps as a Board member to know each staff member, what their personalities are, to help us be able to work together better as a Board. So that was a really awesome conference this weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to again thank Dr. Leepa for presenting tonight. I believe that we're going to be in good hands moving forward on this. I'd also like to echo some things that have been said tonight by my peers on the Board of Education. As I talk to Dr. Holt about issues, about where we're at as a district, I find it's not just surface conversation, that she knows exactly what she's doing, where it needs to be, where she needs to be. And I have to agree with Board Member Buckaloo that, well, I couldn't do it. So congratulations on that and being on top of that. And just want you to know that you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Medel?
Food is wonderful. I'm sorry, I've lived through the chicken patties and the chicken nuggets, and I survived. I wasn't malnourished and, you know, it was better than packing my own lunch some days. Whatever's on that Texas toast?
I don't know.
Oh, to die for. But don't get too close because the onions are a little strong, so stay away from me. Stand back a few feet. A lot of things have been said here tonight that we all shared in, but always in different aspects. And we always take away something different, like I said at the retreat. Everybody hears things differently. And therefore, it always works out well when we get a chance to hear the same thing because we all have a different take on it. And Mr. Buckaloo talked about what we had heard at the conference on November 9, 10, and 11. We had that opportunity to go to that MASP Annual Leadership Conference. And it was a four-day event that includes continuing education units, excuse me, but that's not the main emphasis of the reason for going. The reason for going is to gather as much information as possible. There's a brief conference sessions that we attended. They were guest speakers who spoke to all of us. So if it sounds sometimes that, well, you guys just went to the same place and did the same thing, couldn't we just send one? No, because we all hear something different, and it was a group session. And like Mr. Buckaloo said, we get a chance to network with other School Board Trustees. So I also attended the Group One on Sexual Abuse in Schools and the Governor's 21st Century Educational Report on Improving Student Achievement. Very seldom did I see my fellow trustees once we broke up into different sessions. The only time I saw them was when it was, came back to time to sit down to eat lunch or dinner or breakfast. But I also got a chance to attend sessions on first-year Superintendent Evaluations. Now you think that, since I've been here this many years, I would know a lot about evaluations. But again, this is one of those things that it keeps changing. And even though we think we've got something in place, little nuances are brought to the forefront that need to be changed and dealt with. So it's, since the document's constantly changing, and from time to time, we have a new Superintendent, I felt that it was necessary that I go and attend that evaluation. Strategic planning, school leaders, I learned about school, my school data, and got a chance to go online and take a look at school profiles and learn a lot about the information that's out there about each individual school and our district. Superintendent Board Relations, partnerships in schools turnaround, and many more. I was able to take away from the conference many new perspectives on my ever-changing position as a trustee and legislative trends that will affect our district in the coming months. It's important to me to be continually learning, networking, and strategizing for better educational opportunities for our students as we try to navigate through the minefield of educational reforms. So since the last Board meeting, I've been able to attend several coffee sessions with our legislators. And it helps that I'm addicted to caffeine now because I think I've been to quite a few and I've consumed a lot of coffee. But it's given me the chance to network with not only state representatives, state senators, but also our county commissioners. I got a chance to attend the Family Resource Center Luncheon that Chef Tony provides every single year, where the money is, from that event, go to help our families in Wayne Westland through our Family Resource Center. I also got a chance to go to the Health and Welfare Meeting. This is one that Amanda Dibis over at the Family Resource Center coordinates with community agencies who come together and share what services they have available for this community. And then I take that information and I share it out in the district with everybody else so that if somebody speaks up at a meeting and says that they have a need for, I can pull that out or I can send them to Amanda where they can help them out. I tried going to the Choice Work Meeting, that was the time that the power went out. And when I got here, big sign on the door said, "Go next door to Career Tech in the Commons area." But I don't think a whole lot of people saw the big sign on the door in the dark. So unfortunately, there weren't a whole lot of people that did make it over there. But I know we had a lot of those meetings out in the community. Academic Letter Awards, we've heard people talk about, the Board Retreat. I also got a chance to go to Wayne County Association of School Boards Meeting, where we talked about restorative justice. And this is also a conference that several of us attended at School Craft College, that we need to look at other means besides suspension for our kids. Both plays were great. The kids did a wonderful job at both high schools. We have a lot of talented students in this school district, whether they play a musical instrument or whether they are able to memorize a lot of dialogue and put expression behind their words in a costume that doesn't always make sense to them. They did a great job. But looking forward, this week we've got elementary conferences. And we also have a couple of choir concerts this week on the 6th and the 7th at Stockmeier for John Glenn and Wayne High. Mr. Buckaloo alluded to the Honor Society inductions and the Military Ball. But we also have some music concerts coming up for John Glenn and Wayne High. Wayne High's is on the 12th and John Glenn's is on the 14th. But that isn't all of the holiday concerts. I think every single elementary, upper elementary, and middle school are also doing holiday concerts. And it's hard for us as trustees to make it to all of them, but we're going to try. But through it all, our kids try really hard, whether it's in reading, math, science, social studies, or learning music. Our kids try very hard. And I just want to have, everybody have a great and safe holiday and come back to us in one piece, well-rested and ready to hit the ground running.
Thank you, Mrs. Medel. I should have mentioned this after the public comments, those, especially because you've been new to the district. This is Cheryl Watson here, she's the Secretary for the Superintendent's Office. If you can make sure that she has your number. And Ms. Sample, too, make sure that they have the correct number for you as well, so that anyone that speaks, they can get back to you. I just want to say thank you to the pledged children that came in today from Roosevelt McGrath, Gabriel Klein, Zaria Klein, Haley, Holly, and Ramona Miller. Thank them for leading us in the pledge. I also want to say that, you know, I just want to say that we, sometimes, we're all human and we all have different personalities when we work together. And we might not always agree on everything, but it's important to keep in the forefront why we all serve on the Board, why we all work in the district, why we all come together. And it's about our students and students' achievement. And I think as long as that we remember what's important, being our children, our families, that we can all work together for a common cause and move forward together. I want to say happy holidays. I can't believe that I'm even saying happy holidays. It's hard for me to even believe that we just finished Thanksgiving and going into Christmas. But happy holidays to everyone because we want to see you again until next year. Have a safe, enjoyable holiday, enjoy your family. And at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Hines.
Second.
Supported by Mrs. Medel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.